Mike Young.
Marge Cooney.
Liz Banks. All right. The agenda is, um...
Thank you.
Approval of the minutes from August 17th, 2022. A determination at 242 Big Alum Road for Samuel and Cara Gilbert. And a determination at 15 Cove Drive for Shawn Bushy. And town planner update after that. So, we can start with the minutes. Anybody have any, um, changes or amendments?
Nope. That would vitiate anything that was said.
What?
I said nothing that would vitiate any outcome of anything that was said. So, it was good.
Okay.
I believe, anyway.
Somebody took excellent notes.
That's what I said. I complimented the lady.
Everybody down here have anything?
Nope.
Anything?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second?
Of August 17th.
August 17th.
2022.
Okay. Motion is made in second to accept the minutes. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous.
Does Tom have... Does Epstein?
No, he was here.
Oh, that wasn't the one. I'm sorry. Yeah. No, that's not the one.
Okay. Next is a determination for 242 Big Alum Road. Samuel and Cara Gilbert. They're requesting a determination to raise the existing home and rebuild the new residence to connect... There's two houses on that property. They're going to ra... Remove one and make another home with the old home and a new home. Anyway, um... We received information from the, um, town planner, Jane Blue Bond, the DPW. They just need to know if there's going to be a new driveway access. They would need a permit for that.
Mr. Gilbert just confirmed that it is going to be on Roy Road. And that's how it shows all the plan.
Okay. The fire department just talked about the meeting the fire alarm codes. Conservation approved the, um, project with conditions. And they talked about, um, the building department. That just makes you aware that there needs to be an asbestos, um, survey done before tearing down the house. So, Mr. Gilbert, if you'd like to present your project.
Okay. The reason for this tonight is to go through the fact that the lot actually is nonconforming and that, uh, the lot according to the zoning regulations is supposed to be three quarters of an acre with 125 feet of frontage. The property right now has 157... 137 feet of frontage and is roughly, um, .677 acres, which is really, depending on the average lot you go at Big Alum, is maybe four to five times bigger than the other lots on the lake itself. The building that's being raised, which is their existing residence, which is the Gilberts that own that house, they're tearing down the house itself, rebuilding it to connect to a smaller home, which is located on the lot itself, uh, which is on the 242A, to be joined as one individual building. The accessory building itself actually will be used as office space for a husband that will be adjoining the house itself. And the connection, there'll be a door from the proposed structure. And there's also a deck in the back of the house that will be able to connect from the main house to the existing house that's there. There's two other structures on the property. One is a garage and another is a shed, which they're both located as a, uh, additional structures on the property, but they're not being altered or changed. They're going to stay as is. No driveway is in there per se, other than the fact that, uh, the garage itself has a driveway off of Big Alum Road itself. The main access on this property is Roy Road, which is used presently for the existing house that's there. And it'll be just changed modernized to connect to the existing new house. In that house, there'll be a, uh, a track pad that will be placed at the driveway while the house is being constructed to... For soil erosion and for control of dust and everything on the property itself. The property has gone through a public hearing process with the Conservation Commission. It has been approved for construction. There's an order of conditions that has been issued on the 14th. And so, the, um, property is presently serviced by Town Sewer and a well. Outside of that, I have no other questions or anything. If you want to answer, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
There's 41 feet front... I'm sorry.
I was going to ask if anybody has any questions. And I was going to start with Mike.
Mike?
I have no questions on the project.
Marge?
No, I was just going to state that, uh, there's only 41-foot frontage, and that is on the lake, but the other is different.
Oh, there's 41 feet on the frontage of the lake?
That's what I said.
But the actual road frontage is... Was 137 feet?
137.
Right.
Yeah. Now, that... It seems to conform with everything that I've seen, so looking at this, which makes me happy.
There's no variances and no... Nothing required, other than the fact that the lot didn't conform as per side size.
I would... Excuse me. I would state that in any... Any motion that be made or something for the granting, if we grant it, that it state that it's 242 and 242A, Big Alum Road, in any motion.
That is correct. Yep.
All right, because, you know...
The title also says that.
Well, it says 242 Big Alum. That's what got me.
Oh, if you look at... If you look at the lodge plan, it's got 242A and 242.
I know, but this one on the request says 242.
I know, but their mailing address is 242.
I know. Just wanted to cover up all our tracks. I'm fine.
I'll say it, Mike.
Yes, I am.
Fidelis?
I don't have any questions. I just just a statement. So, the existing, uh, the building, which is not going to be torn down, so beyond... It's a one-story building, because I was looking at the plans.
Correct. It's one-story, yep.
So, the only modification there would be the connection to the new building.
It'll be connected to the other property that's there, yes. Right now, the lot actually, as it exists presently, has got two homes on it. The 242 and the 242A, which you're not supposed to have two homes. But anyway, what they're doing is they're connecting it to make it one.
May I... My friend, a toy. You... Ronnie, did Fidelis's question, you said it was one-story?
The house presently is one-story.
The present house is one-story.
Yes.
But on your thing, you have the existing houses as two.
They're adding a second story to the existing house.
Oh, wow.
To one of the existing...
Existing.
The one... The house that's located off of Roy Road will have a second story.
No, I know. That is on the proposed.
Correct.
But the ones that are existing, the cottage and the house that's existing.
They have one story.
The application says two. So, I need... It says existing condition two.
Okay.
I need you to initial it. Put one there.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, just so we're clear, so the existing house that you... That's there on the lot right now is one-story, not including the office, his so-called office.
The office itself is...
And he's going to take the house that's there. He's not knocking it down. He's adding a level to it.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Just want to clarify.
Any more questions?
No.
All right. So, the reason that you're coming for determination is because the lot area is smaller. It's nonconforming and the front setback is nonconforming. However, everything that you're doing is not going to change either one of those. They're not...
That's correct. Nothing's changed.
They're going to stay the same.
Right.
So, there will be no new nonconformities. Any more discussion?
No.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Mark Stat? Now, we're good.
Initial what? This?
Yeah, just initial on the box.
Which one?
Just right here. Just...
Thank you.
Does anyone like to make a motion?
I'm willing to.
You can.
It might take a little while, because I've altered it many different ways. All right. I'll make a motion to grant a determination to Samuel H. and Cara M. Gilbert. Their property located at 242 and 242A, Big Alum Road. As requested to ra... To raise the existing home located at 242A, Big Alum, and to construct a new home to connect to the house on 242 Big Alum Road, so as to create one home and to be constructed in the vicinity of the existing foundation.
Correct.
The existing detached garage and the two sheds will remain.
Right.
Unaltered.
Unaltered, correct.
The driveway to remain on Roy Road.
Correct.
Okay.
What about the plan? We got to say the...
I'm coming to it. I just wanted to add one more here that I didn't...
I thought you might have been finished.
Yeah, yeah. Prepared by Gilbert Engineering, Inc., 54 Main Street, Sturridge, Mass. 01566. Gilbert Residence at 242 Big Alum Road. This... Oh, no. Forget that. Okay. Prepared, that's it, all right? And it's, um, as shown on proposed site plan for Samuel H. Gilbert, 242, 242A, Big Alum Road, revision number three, dated 9/122. The original date was 7/21/22 on the plan. Also, uh, I can't make out the job number on that Gilbert... The one for the architectural...
It's right there in the bottom right-hand corner, under your railboard, yeah.
No, no. I ain't got that number.
Oh, okay.
I'm talking about the one where it did the draw...
The small one?
The small drawings, that... What it's going to look like, the architect.
Oh, it's in the packet.
I know, but you can't make it out.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying. I... We tried as best we...
Oh, wait.
Go ahead. Maybe you can read it better than I can.
Kemper Associates.
Yes, but it... The whole thing says Gilbert Residence, 242 Big Alum Road, Fistale, Mass. And then architectural plans by Kemper Associates, Inc., LLC. Uh, I couldn't make out the date. I couldn't make out a job number. And I can't make out the number for the address on Farmington Avenue, Farmington, Connecticut.
The date is 7/21/22.
And the job number?
There is no job number in here, but it's sheet number A4, A dash 4.
There's an A3 and an A4.
Sheet W, uh, sheet number?
A3 and A4.
Yeah, A dash 3 and A dash 4.
And A2? And A1?
Oh, yes. There's a bunch.
All right. Do you have a job number or something on it, you know? Or a plan number? All right. That's it. So, I don't know what the number is for the Farmington Avenue address. I don't think...
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous?
I'm sorry. Who's second? I was busy writing.
Fidelis.
Thank you, Fidelis. Okay. You're good.
All right.
Thank you.
That takes care of that.
Good for...
Are you going to need this? You sure?
Well, I'll take them back anyway, I guess.
Yeah, we don't need it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Say hello to you in a half, in case I have to see.
Oh, another big plan.
Can I hand out more big ones? Thank you. All set? Okay, the next is a determination for 15 Cove Drive for Shawn Bushy. The applicant is proposing to raise the existing gazebo and deck and rebuild a new smaller deck. Also proposed is a low... Is to lower the sunroom to match the existing floor grade in the basement. A new screen room to be built under the existing sunroom. And a patio to be constructed in the area under the existing deck. We received information from the town planner. The DPW had no comments. Fire had no concerns. Conservation, they have been issued... Has been approved with conditions. And the building inspector, he does not have any other issues with this project. Let's see the reason. The reason for the determination is the nonconforming side setbacks and lot coverage. Anyway, so we can start... Oh, Mr. Gilbert, you can make your presentation.
Okay. Can I start now?
Huh? You can.
Okay. What it is, is it's property located off of Cove Drive in Sturridge, which is basically off of Cedar Street, uh, excuse me, New Boston Road. And it's the actually... It's the first house on your left going down on that shaft curve. It's, uh... It's roughly 300 feet deep from the road itself, and it's got roughly seven tenths of an acre of property. What it is again is it's a nonconforming in that it has to have, uh, the half-acre, which it does have, and it does have the frontage, uh, which is 125, but it doesn't... The setbacks, uh... What we're doing is we're holding the construction of the building itself relative to the existing setbacks, so no... No changes have been done relative to any setbacks, and we don't need any variances or anything relative to the property itself. The only nonconforming thing is the building was supposed to be 15%. Right now, the existing building is 15.75%, of which, uh, the... With the addition and alterations, it's now going to come to 15.62, which actually is a decrease. And the decrease is because of the fact that the deck in the rear of the property, uh, was removed and put in place, which is a smaller deck now, which decreased the area of occupancy of the land. The building itself on the area closest to the lake is going to be renovated in that the excavation on the lower portion of that section of the building will be brought down to the same grade as the basement, and that area will be screened and made into a porch. I'd just like to get up a second to show you to make it a bit easier. What it is, this is the existing deck right here now. This is the new deck that's going to go here, period. So, it's decreasing all of this. Right here is the new addition going on right there, which is connected to this, which is, if you look at it, this is its new addition, which is right here.
Right.
Also, there's a patio that's coming in the back, and that's the patio in the back, which is right here.
And that's going to be pervious.
Please?
That will be pervious.
It'll be perv... Right. And then also, there's a power line that... This power line here will be dug in... It'll be underground versus overhead now. Okay? I can see what happened here. Okay? This... This right here is the original deck.
This one you can see on the small plan pretty good, too.
And then building a new deck.
That's when you can see on the small plan pretty good.
Also, they've taken an area here and making a patio, a pervious patio underneath here. And then over here, they're putting in an addition here, excavating that out to the basement floor, and then got a screen room, which is right here, which this here will be added right onto that base right there, which is this. And also here, with the power line coming in here, they're excavating that and moving it underground. Nothing has changed relative to the setbacks.
Right.
We don't need anything.
Well, it's good that it reduces it by 0.13% anyway.
Right. It's a reduction.
Yeah. That's a good thing.
Let's see. Any questions? And this time, I can start with Tom.
My only question is on this... On this drawing, you have... Is that on the... Is that on the point? Or is this a piece of property on the point? Or is this...
On the point, no.
Okay.
If you look at this property...
Yeah.
If you go down... If you go down...
I'm familiar with Cove Drive.
This Cove... Okay, Cove Drive. You go down Cove Drive, as you go sharp right, it's that first house on your left. This here's where the metallers and everything over here.
Okay. All right, perfect.
Okay? And it's basically from here down here 300 feet.
Perfect.
And that's the lake itself.
Gotcha. All right, perfect. My only question is wondering where...
It's a huge house for a...
Yeah. That's it.
Fidelis? Marge?
No, I'm fine with it. I like to see it come down a little in the nonconforming part, so that's good. That's a positive.
Yep.
Mike?
No issues. Looks like a nice project, well-designed.
So, two nonconformities. One was the lot coverage is becoming less, so that's better. And then the side setbacks are unchanged. The one that was nonconforming isn't going to change at all, so, um, that's about it. Anybody want... Any further discussion? You... Anybody want to make a motion?
There's no takers, oh?
No.
Go ahead, Marge.
No takers? Okay.
All right. I don't want to be greedy, you know?
You do it so well, Marge.
Move to grant the determination to Shawn Bushy, uh, property located at 15 Cove Drive. As requested, to raise the existing deck and gazebo and rebuild a new smaller deck.
Correct.
Additionally, to excavate, uh, under the existing deck and sun porch.
Correct.
To the basement floor.
Correct.
All right. And to the basement floor grade, I should say. And then construct a patio enclosure. The area under the sun room, creating the screen room. And the area under an existing deck and patio will have a pervious surface.
Correct.
Did I cover everything?
Well, plus the...
And then some.
The power line is going underground.
Well, that doesn't...
Okay, doesn't care. Okay.
That really doesn't...
Okay. I don't care. Okay.
Yeah. No, that'd be good. We'll add that. Power line will be under...
Under, yeah. The proposed new underground power line.
Okay. All right. We can add that to it. As shown on Plan 22027, 22027, dated 7/28/22, there were no revisions. Prepared by Gilbert Engineering, Inc., 54 Main Street, Sturridge, Mass. 01566. And I should add on both the motions, the proposal does not intensify and create additional nonconformities. Approval is granted, provided that all issues, concerns, permits deemed necessary by various departments, boards, et cetera, be adhered to and in compliance prior to any construction. Those, as I usually stipulate, are the ones that are necessary prior, because then you get the other ones after, right? Like the as-built. Okay. I neglected to add that to the file, so should we amend it and put it to the...
I'll make a revision and then...
And enter it under the first...
Yep.
...prove? No.
And the date is, um... The plan date is the 26th?
No, 7/28/22.
It says 26.
Did it say 26? Okay, I'm sorry. See, I saw 28. Thank you. Thank you for that. All right.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I second.
Fidelis seconds it. Any more discussion?
Thank you for correcting me on that date.
That's okay. It's hard to read. All those in favor? Unanimous?
For Forton Prosper.
Hey, you did a good job.
Well, these here are two simple jobs.
Have you done this before, Ronnie?
I've done it before once.
I appreciate it. I like those.
Take whatever compliments you get and be gracious.
I am thankful.
I love to tease you, you know that. I love to tease you. Say hello, tease.
I will.
How's your station, Paul, and thank you?
Do we have any old business? New business?
Under old business, I just wanted to ask a question because of that variance we had. Were there any appeals filed? Because I know one of the people that were present.
There are no appeals.
Stated that he possibly would, do you recall?
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Say hello to Olivia.
No appeals.
So, no appeals? You appealed, period, it's over, good. 20 days after the filing by the town clerk, he gets the decision, she files with the Wester Court. And then, 20 days from the day she filed, there's an appeal. So, we don't have an appeal. All set? The old, old business, I had.
All right, any new business? No? How about a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Somebody second that.
I second it.
All those in favor? Okey-dokey, we're all set.
I noted 17.